We're gonna open our meeting of the Millville Planning Board. It is January 8th, it is 6:00 PM. We'll start with Roll Call.
Jason Merly.
Justin Allen.
Pam Williams.
I'm Pam Maloney. Preston is not with us this evening. We're gonna start with, we have some minutes to take a look at. We, Dylan kindly put together the minutes for November 13th and November 27th. You should've all received those in your packet, and I think she sent them out via email earlier. Is there any discussion about these minutes?
No, I read them. Good to know.
Yep.
All right. Is there a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for November 13th.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Justin Allen, aye.
Aye.
Aye. And how about the 27th?
Same, same, read them, didn't see any problems with them, so that's good. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for November 27th, 2023.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Justin, all abstain, I wasn't here, so.
Aye.
All right. We are gonna take things a little out of order today, if that's all right. We'll start with our friend Jack Hunter. Come on up.
Our dear friend, Jack.
Our dear friend, Jack.
Are you setting me up or what?
Lowering expectations, Jack.
Well, that's been your rating line. You still want us out of order?
Yep.
Okay. Jack Hunter, you guys know me. This is Mark Allen, civil engineer, Rob Knappich, civil engineer slash lawyer. I, surprise, surprise, I'm on this side of the table.
Yep.
To talk about Millville Estates, which I know some of you know as a long, long history in Millville, not a very good one, I don't think.
It's a new day.
And I was approached by the new owner who lives in Connecticut, Sheldon, Connecticut, if I could and would shepherd this through the planning board to try to get a permit so it can get developed, and find a possible developer, or maybe he'll develop it himself. The first thing I did was call the Ethics Commission, because I haven't worked here in over a year, almost a year. And I got cleared with them because Millville Estates was never before you. It wasn't formally, remember that one guy wanted to build-
Somebody called once, but-
-concrete houses or something, some crazy thing. And they said, "That's fine, I'm fine, I have an email to that effect, so get that out of the way." So, I am pleased to say that I asked Mark's firm with Rob to participate in this, and I really think we got a good team. I would not, I think, I think you know, I wouldn't do this unless we're gonna do it right. I'm not here to, you know, bulldoze anything down your throat. But we have, we think, an opportunity to take what's happened in the past and make less of a footprint on the property and on the environment in the neighborhood, but still get the same, approximately the same density, and maybe some housing that people, working-class people can afford. We're not, we're not proposing affordable housing. So, let me go back a little bit, and I think Dylan sent you these. Just that on October 10th, 2006, a long time ago, they, the board did vote to approve this subdivision. Minutes are here. Signed decision was put together on June 12th, no, June 12th, was voted upon with nine conditions. Plan was recorded at the Registry of Deeds as an approved subdivision, and then they actually went and got a covenant. So, they were ready to start construction, and way, in the way back when I was first here and started wondering, "What's this Millville Estates?", I went through all the emails and stuff that we had on the drive, which was difficult because it's so slow. But essentially, what I recall, and maybe Pam knows a little bit, is he was a very difficult applicant. He was contentious, and he started construction because he also needed conservation approval, which he did get, but he started construction before they gave him his permit. He was violating the permit as soon as he did construction, and then there were lawsuits. And he threatened people, it was personal lawsuits and municipal lawsuits, and he eventually went bankrupt. When I was here, it went out to bid or out to auction, and a fellow from Rhode Island bought it and called me. I told him what I knew, which is what I just told you, and I never heard from him again. And then it went, I don't know if it went to auction, but this fellow from Connecticut bought it. So, it's our opinion that technically, we could start, if we renewed the covenant, we could start construction on this, provided we upgrade the wetlands, if there's any upgrade, wetlands don't change that much, and that we make sure that it complies with the current stormwater management. So, it might need some tweaking. But after internally talking about it many times, and talking to the client, we feel it's really, you know, there's gonna be a lot of blasting, there's gonna be a lot of disruption to the neighborhood and the whole piece of land, and there might be a better way. Surprisingly, and I didn't realize this, shame on me, is that your zoning is pretty liberal here, very liberal. I mean, and so, with Mark's, really behind Mark's expertise, we started talking about alternatives to lessen the footprint to the neighborhood, to the town, but still get us the housing that we think would be sellable and get people living here with less impact. But we need your help, because without, and what Mark's gonna propose is an open space subdivision, and without that permit, we can't move forward, and then we have to rely on this, and we really don't want to. So, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it, and I'll let Mark or Rob, I don't know who's taking off here.
I'm gonna take off.
All right.
What you have in front of you is the Millville Estate subdivision in its current form. We just kinda added some color to it, put the roads in, put the houses in, put the driveways in, just to kinda give you a size and scope of what that permit sort of is. It's, it's the traditional one-acre zone, 200 feet of frontage, 40-foot front setbacks. It's, it's, you know, 18 years ago, that might've been something desirable, you know. These days, a lot of housing that's on the market now is more apartment-driven, condominium-driven. People want smaller yards to care for, they don't want, you know, the lawns and, you know, all the maintenance that goes along with homeownership. So, as Jack said, we kinda did a pretty thorough scrub of the zoning bylaws, and in this VR district, it offers a host of different items to look at. So, we, we like to just kinda give our clients the options and evaluations of what could be done, and an open space subdivision is one of them, where you take the basic number of units and you give back some open space, shrink up the lots. But in addition to the single-family residential and/or townhouse-style units, this zone even allows for special permits to do commercial, all sorts of different uses that, you know, we didn't think was right for the neighborhood, but it was just, it was refreshingly surprised to see that it's, it's out there. So, what we thought would be the highest and best use of the property would be more of a flexible development, more of a condominium-style layout where we only utilize the first cul-de-sac, and we wouldn't do the second wetland crossing and the second cul-de-sac up to the rear. I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but off Thayer Street, the town owns the piece to the north. So, we thought it was a logical design to sort of mesh in all of the open space to be tied to the town's open space and create trails to it so that the, you know, future residents can, can access bigger parcels of area. What we also like about this product is that it does away with the multiple wetland crossings. So, as you can see with the conventional subdivision, there's a wetland crossing here and a wetland crossing here, and then three of the lots, at least three of the lots would need driveway crossings. So, this impact would only have one wetland crossing, and it would be at the skinniest possible spot on the property. What, what other benefits would have is that our client would, would opt to make this property, a project, not town-owned, so it would be a condominium association that would be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the roadways. We think that's sort of a benefit for the, for the town as well. Sort of the third and fourth benefit are because they're a condominium-style unit, you know, data shows that less school-aged children tend to be in these sort of startup homes. They're generally first-time homebuyers or retirees that are in this type of market, not a big draw on the school system. So, we, we've done some re-wetland evaluation, as Jack mentioned, we didn't wanna come back to you and say, "Oh, my God, all the wetlands have changed." So, we've gone out with fresh flags out there, confirmed that the wetlands are still where they are, and based on the previous applications, we did see that the soil was conducive to handling this type of development in this smaller area. What would, what would be required is each of the individual duplexes would have their own well, and then there would be a shared leaching system somewhere on the property. So, although, you know, we don't have municipal water and sewer, we're very comfortable that with the size, you know, the 20-plus acre property, that we can do a shared system with individual wells per duplex. And another caveat, since 18 years ago, the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Regulations was sort of, they were in effect back then, but there weren't really a lot of, you know, people watching out, if you will, there was not a lot of oversight. So, now with oversight, with MIPA, with NIPDs, we now know that additional stormwater controls, collection, and treatment will be done on the property as well, where, you know, before there'd be a lot more, you know, rainwater generated, there'd be a lot more fertilizers, there'd be a lot more lawns being cut, so, you know, we'd like to think that with, with this board's sort of, obviously not approval yet, but just sort of general feeling back tonight, is if this is something that you may wanna consider, you know, something that Millville may want to sort of latch on to as far as the planning board goes. We haven't been to the Conservation Commission just yet, but we are, like I say, confident that the wetlands haven't changed, and, and with fewer wetland crossings, we, we think we'll get positive feedback from the Conservation Commission.
I think the other advantage of the condominium is that the association is obviously a legal organization, they'll be responsible for all the wells and the septic system. So, we know it'll be professionally monitored, it has to be, instead of individual homes, which not, are not. And as again Mark said, the road will be private, so again, less impact all around. And we didn't, I don't, you didn't bring any renderings, we, we've been toying around with what it could look like for architecturally, but, you know, before we spend more money of our client's money, we, we wanna know which direction you'd like us to go in.
I know my opinion.
I have questions. And I realize-
These are just spitball questions.
Yeah, sure.
You've already answered that it's gonna be a shared septic, so it's gonna be one system for all?
Correct.
Okay, individual wells. You've already said it's gonna be HOA, so it's not gonna be an accepted road. How much land will be, Millville be getting in the open space?
I'm gonna ballpark about 10 acres of the 20.
So, on the other plan, we had-
Zero.
Zero.
Correct.
And it's the piece up to the, to the left?
It's shared.
Yes.
It's all this back here. Existing land, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're gonna give us trails to access it?
Right.
Yeah, it could meet up with the, the trails behind the school.
Right, exactly right.
Yep.
And you were talking about a trail right off the road?
Yeah, right off the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
You know, to start it off.
There's kinda one there, yeah.
Exactly.
As, as any other thing, are any of the things that you already have have any expirations on them? I know you said that there was one that you'd have to reapply for, well, I forgot.
Wetlands.
Renew the covenant.
Wetlands, they'd have to renew.
And the covenant, yeah, you'd need a new covenant. But what, if this was desirable, then we're gonna send Mark and Rob off to start engineering it, and we'll work with our client, who has a lot of expertise in condos, about architecturally what they could possibly look like, and we can go to the Conscom simultaneously, hopefully. In your bylaw for open space, it does allow for us, so we have to show you a yield plan, which fortunately we have, it's already been approved, 17 lots. We can simultaneously answer that yield plan to be declared an open space subdivision, at the same time do the permit for this subdivision, so we can do them simultaneously instead of stagger. There's no sense to do them stagger.
I know the duplex, I guess that's what, we call them a duplex or condominium?
Well, it's, the whole thing is a condominium.
Is it like a duplex? Or is it a condominium, like, is the law, like, the terminology escapes me sometimes?
Duplex is the style-
Yeah.
-of the building, two units per building, the whole thing is under one condominium.
That's what I was asking.
Right.
That makes more sense.
That's what I didn't understand, I just forgot. Oh, that seems kinda cool, I know that you-
So, these are all individual-
So, the, the two families for less of-
Two families.
So, we still get 18 houses on nine lots as opposed to nine big lots. Do you have any idea what waivers you'd be looking for? Or is that, is that too early for that?
No, no, it's not too early for it, but through your zoning regulations, this is sort of a, a special permit, so I don't know if it's technically waivers or as opposed to just meeting the criteria of your special permit.
Got you.
Waivers are usually for a subdivision.
Right.
I got you, so this is different than that.
A little bit.
I got it.
It's gonna have all the engineering a subdivision would, and we obviously need it peer-reviewed, blah, 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 blah.
I was gonna add the question, obviously, this would be up for a peer review.
Oh, oh, yeah, absolutely.
I know the house is over by 122 in Blackstone down to the state line, they have some units very similar to this-
Yes.
-where the railroad is behind them.
That's our project as well.
They're beautiful.
Oh, really?
They're beautiful. I think they were sold when they dug the foundation.
That's the exact model.
That's the style that-
Well, architecturally, maybe not exactly the same architecture, because they're, they had a big drop-off in the back, so you gotta drive behind them to get into the front door.
But to make that out of that lot was amazing.
Correct.
Those are really beneficial to the town.
Yes, yes, so identical, like, those were 12 units, this would be 18 units.
Yeah, that's nice.
Those are the ones down near the gorge?
Arcade, arcade auto body and-
Yep.
JC stops.
Oh, in the back? They're right on 122.
I was surprised that they fit so many, and, you know, you drove by it, and then all of a sudden, they kept going up.
Exactly.
Even that newest one going up. I didn't think there was gonna be room for another one.
Yeah, there's five along the street, and then one setback, so there's six total. Yep.
It's good stuff.
Yeah. And we found through that project, the, the market for younger homeowners, first-time homebuyers and/or retirees or whatnot, they've, they've, they've been selling pretty well.
We're looking for built houses with kids though, because our school's under.
It's under. That's unusual, probably.
You're not the only town in the Commonwealth.
40% capacity.
Wow.
You stick a playground somewhere on this side?
And when we get, if this board is amenable or, you know, favorable towards an open space concept, there are, there are mechanisms of which that open space either gets deeded to the town, a conservation restriction might be talked about through the conservation. I don't know if the town formally has an open space committee, but some towns do to kinda weigh in on it.
We don't have a current one, we should.
No, like Medicom has, and we don't have anything like that.
Mark's right, and Rob helped me, if it goes to the town, the Conservation Commission, they can't hold a restriction, it has to be a nonprofit that holds the restriction.
Right, like Medicom or something.
Medicom owns the one that we own.
Or it could go outright to Medicom.
Or it could be conveyed to the town in, in the care and custody of the Conservation Commission, and thereby kind of achieve the same.
Yeah.
It's easier that way, too.
If that's the route we go, we'd certainly work with town council through this process to ensure that it's protected through restriction or outright conveyance.
I like the project. Am I amenable to it?
Is this address 179 Thayer?
It is. It is.
Remember it?
Oh, I remember it, I was looking forward to something going in there.
I would just like to give my opinion.
I mean, this is way better.
Way more better.
Way more better. It's not what I was expecting you to bring, so.
Really?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Tell me what you're-
No. I am not telling you what I was expecting you to bring.
An industrial subdivision? I joke about that with Mark, yeah, you could've legally, I guess.
Oh, we know.
But we just think it's like the right feel for the neighborhood, you know, Thayer Street is, you know, residential town-owned property to the back, just sort of made sense a lot of times.
Right next to a series of other duplexes that are right there, out on the main road.
And they're off the beaten path enough where you, it's not like a change of scenery, streetscape, you know, like the Blackstone site, this is, you'll see a driveway, and then it'll bend out to the back.
From an open space standpoint, I've always wanted to see trails back there, it just makes sense, so I, I think that's a nice add-on to it.
Yeah, maybe we showed our cards a little too soon, but whatever you think for us. Would be appreciated.
Yeah, and what we'll do now, as far as the hard engineering numbers go, just keep the, the grading in the, in the stormwater to an absolute minimum so we can keep the, the condo association as small as possible and give back as much open space as we can. And we'll show, we'll zoom out and show the schools and the town on land and future trails to them, you know, we'll pretty it up.
And we will, once Mark's ready, we'll meet with the fire department. The few, previous, previous fire chief had some issues with 17, I have no idea what the current one.
Do we know that turner radius ballpark? Is it within normal status?
It will be.
Yeah, it's 100-foot diameter. Most, most safety vehicles have a 45-foot radius, so this is 50-foot.
And I know the engineering's not done yet, but what's the highest grade percent?
I'm gonna guess 5%, tops, yeah.
Not much.
No.
And we'll meet with the Board of Health, and maybe, we'll obviously gotta go to the Conservation Commission, and any, and your peer engineer, to make sure it's done properly, and we're excited about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've got the client who likes it, and hopefully, I'm, what I'm hearing is the board is nodding yes to move forward.
Well, at least I am, I don't speak to the board.
I don't wanna vote, you can't move.
No, you can't.
Nothing to vote on. But a nod of the head or some comments would be very helpful.
Wink and a nod, work it.
No, 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 no. I will tell you that I know that Pam is, cannot sit on this.
No.
It is a special permit, so I need four members for both the open space and the condo.
Each meeting.
Each meeting, well-
That might finish.
Do you have the Mullen Rule here?
I don't know.
Okay, we'll find that out. But I can ask Dylan to reach out to Preston and-
Yeah. We have an associate member, too.
One, or both.
Or both.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll get here, that'll be great.
But we'll make sure.
Yeah.
And we'll work with whoever-
Dylan wouldn't be a quorum for that?
Not for a special permit.
Not for a special permit, if it was a subdivision, it would be, but-
So, with the associate member-
You're gonna have a similar issue with conservation.
Yes, they can, they're already appointed, they can hear a special permit.
Okay.
I don't think I had anything else while you were talking.
You'll have a similar issue with conservation. Yeah.
Well, they don't need a supermajority, do they?
No.
To issue an order of conditions?
Yeah.
Simple majority. But you do need, you're a five-member board, so.
We are three members currently.
No, we're five.
We're supposed to be five.
Yeah.
We have three people on the board.
So, we need a full board.
So, that's an issue, we do need four.
Yeah, you're gonna have an issue.
You need four? Oy, oy, oy. You've run into this before, haven't you, for it?
Yeah.
How will you resolve it? I don't wanna know. Do I talk to Peter, or, okay, we'll work with Dylan.
Yeah.
I haven't called the chair, I know you gave me his name and number.
Yeah, Eric.
I was waiting to see what direction this was going, so I will call him to warn him that we're coming.
Okay.
And what conceptually it could look like, and then work with Dylan and try and get them a quorum. A real quorum. So.
Is that position fair like the other ones?
Yeah. Exactly like the other ones.
Do you have any idea if the sitting members are in conflict?
Me.
On the Conservation Commission? You're on the Conservation?
Yes. So, we gotta work on that.
She's not the only one she's on either.
Are you one of the three, or you're a four?
I am one of the three.
So, you only got two?
Yes. It's a good reason to-
That's the sign twice.
We'll work on it, we'll work on it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sure. Yes. Are we done?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for-
Very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Look forward to be coming, coming back.
Hopefully not too many.
Yeah. All right. You got his team, I just didn't get their names.
Yeah, I got them, I know them all, all right.
All right, we now have an appointment with Susan Gray for 54 Killani Woods. You wanna come on up?
Evening.
Good evening.
I have been with you before.
Yep.
What I'm trying to do is I own, I'm sorry, I own, thank you. I own about 10 acres of Killani Woods, and the plan that I submitted to you is for two houses with, with a private driveway. What I'm concerned about is I got this contract proposal for the peer review, and it's for $5,200, and I've, I've talked to other people in other towns on planning boards and Conservation Commission and my, my attorney, and they can't understand why for a project this small, it has to be so expensive.
Well, I can't speak for the engineering firm, but I, I can speak for the board anyway, and projects like this, we would send out to peer review, and Dylan would get them that information, I believe, and they give, come back with a quote. This is a group that we've used for many years now, as long as I've been on the board.
I, I understand there has to be a peer review, but from, from what I'm hearing is for something this size, they're surprised that a peer review would cost more than like $1,000 or $1,200.
Have you tried negotiating with the TNTC company to see if they won't?
I didn't know that I could.
I wouldn't see why not. I mean, it's, it's, they're, they're, we're not subjecting you to that price, that's their estimate.
Okay.
I don't know, do we have any alternative engineering groups that could bid for her?
Well, this is the one we've used.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the group we've used.
It might be odd to, to switch to another one or shop around, especially for one project.
But as a client, I mean-
Can I ask other engineering firms for, for peer review?
I guess that would, that would own, that wouldn't benefit the town as much, because that's our engineering group.
Sure.
If we had, if we had more than one listed, I would say maybe contact the other one, but I, we don't, so.
Yeah, that's all we have.
I, I feel like you could, you could contact them to see if you can get the price down, I mean, for a dollar.
It does seem kind of-
Yeah, and I, I feel like the question on how expensive it is is a question for them and not us.
Okay, so you think I should go ahead and-
You have some insight on- You have some insight on this, Jack?
Yeah, I think it's a very dangerous precedent to have the applicant negotiating with your engineer. Dylan could.
Okay.
Or you could.
Yep.
You could ask, can you sharpen your pencil?
I have a contact there. I can email and ask maybe just a, a more understanding of the breakdown of the cost.
Yeah, that, that, that might be helpful 'cause it does seem.
The board selects a gear engineer who, you know, if you wanted to start over, say, you'd get some quotes from different agencies, you might even interview them and then you choose one. And that's who you have on retainer.
Yep.
Regardless of what.
That would be quite a process to take on at this point anyway. I mean, I.
And we have these ones on the retainer.
To do it just for one.
Exactly. I, I don't feel comfortable doing it for, just for one. But I, I think we could ask for clarification on what, why is it so much? If, if you're being advised that that's a lot, I think we could certainly ask them to explain themselves, so.
Okay, 'cause as I say, with, you know, with two thousand seven hundred to the planning board and what it costs for my initial engineering, the cost of the peer reviews is, is almost as much as the whole thing cost in, in the beginning, you know, which seems kind of crazy, you know? So if, if Dylan could do that, I really would appreciate it.
I'll reach out to him tonight.
All right. Okay, all right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, I'll be in touch.
Absolutely, I will too.
All right. We have, um, we have a planning update at all, um, this week, Dylan?
I have a very short one. The book, the, um, bylaws, we, we got the new papers. You know, I have to, I have to insert the new bylaw that's been put in, so I got them today, um, put them all in.
Have a ceremony?
I know, right? So everything from the spring, our spring meeting is now in there. Not the fall yet, but we got our spring meeting. It's all approved and in there. That's great.
And according to Jack's guys, we gotta sharpen up our VR.
And then, um, my other thing is part of the agenda, but, um, I started working on some warrant articles. I don't know if we wanna go over them today since we have a, a, a short meeting.
I'd like to read those.
But we can take a look at them.
Yeah, maybe we could take a quick look at them and.
Is this something we need to discuss?
And I also, yeah, I was included.
Uh, yeah, we do need to talk about that.
Yeah, so either one, so it'd be my two items.
All right, let's, let's do this one first 'cause that one's pressing.
Yeah.
Well, it's all good. It's all set.
Yep.
I, um, I sent them that letter. You can introduce it first.
Oh, perfect. So this, um, I think at our last meeting, we were, we were talking about, um, Dylan and I had been chatting with CMRPC about getting, um, a project going with them in developing a, a economic development plan. And they put together a proposal, which is, I believe, what we're looking at right here, right? This is what you touched.
This is not the proposal, this is the, um, application for money, for more money from them.
More money.
Yeah, direct local technical assistance.
Perfect.
So we're asking for fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. So beyond the hours that we are allotted from CMRPC, this will be the next, uh, amount of funding that we can use for the economic development project.
Exactly. So we get hours from CMRPC for being a member and then we earn hours when we attend the meetings. I think you've attended a few of them for us lately.
Um, coming up.
Perfect, yeah, and that, that gives us some, some hours. Um, I did sign off on using the hours that we have currently to get this project started. Um, and then what we've been chatting with them about is only moving this project forward if we could pretty much guarantee that Millville's not gonna have to put up any money for it 'cause we don't, we don't have an appetite for that. And so far, it looks pretty promising that we'll be able to move this forward without having to put up any money anymore.
And they've given us a phased approach, so if we need to, you know, it's phased, so we can start, we can stop at the end of phase one. You know, if that's our end of funding, but they're gonna absolutely help us get funding where we can. Yeah.
Yep.
Nice work.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is exciting. This is, this is part of that project and, and us looking at that one eighty-one property.
Yeah.
Um, it's to kinda have a plan in place so that we have some guidance when moving forward with trying to get other grants at some point. If we don't have a plan in place, we're not gonna be able to get any money, so. So that's exciting. There's nothing else that we need to do. You've.
No, I sent that letter. Yeah, they wanted a letter of, of commitment. I said that you would all commit to this project. Hope you don't mind.
They did ask for one of us to attend a meeting on the eighteenth.
It should be virtual.
Virtual meeting, I believe.
Yeah.
I believe I, I can do that, um, if you wanted to join as well.
I, I can't on the eighteenth, so.
Long as one person's there, it'll be good.
Perfect.
I'd be into a pinch.
I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is exciting. This is like step one of all the stuff we've been talking about for the last couple of months.
It's good to see some progress.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Um, and, yeah, Dylan, if you want to, um, yep.
Um, a few, oh, I double up this if anyone doesn't have this one.
Got it.
Um, this is what we actually looked at in November. It's been a while. The, uh, language permitted versus permitted. So I started writing that warrant article. It's very long. Um, I'm gonna try to like condense it so it.
Is it long because we have to identify every place where it exists?
Everywhere and it was everywhere.
There's thirty-five instances where we need to change the language.
Wow.
I'm gonna see if I can condense that and say, change this in all of these situations. So maybe I can combine a few into one bullet point. But I did a lot of them here. I wanted Joe's opinion on the sign bylaw because technically, they do have to have a permit.
Yeah.
But the language is confusing because it, is it that it's allowed with a permit we were talking about? Or are some of them not permit? I don't know which ones require the permit, which ones don't, so I wanna clarify with him to make sure.
Double check with him 'cause I think in the past, they've, it's gotten willy-nilly because we've said, well, for the last guy, we said it was permitted, so we allowed it.
Right.
Versus having a permit for it.
This is the issue.
Yeah. And so we're, you're proposing here, we change, I think it looks in most cases, we're saying it's either gonna be changed to allowed or permissible?
Yep, permissible when the sentence structure, you know, requires that sort of language, um, to say that something is allowed. I'm, I'm using that when it's, um, I don't know how to explain, when I'm reading the sentences out, some of them dramatically are permissible 'cause we're talking about prohibition versus permitted.
Yep.
And then other ones are sort of explaining that it's allowed on that lot. I use allowed by right or allowed by special permit.
Okay.
So I unvolunteer to read this at the town meeting.
I will try to show it.
I can volunteer that one.
I'll, I'll take this one because this one's driven me nuts for a good, like, six, seven years. But yeah, this would be a very good one to, to fix anyway.
Yep. Um, I have a few questions on a few of them here. We don't have to look at all, you know, we don't have to go through them all, but if you want, um.
Yeah.
So this is just a snapshot of what you've got in the other five pages?
Yeah, so, so the list doesn't have the actual language, it just has the one word to change. But, um, number nineteen, uh, section one hundred five oh one. So it should be on the.
That's here, signs.
Yeah, uh, it should be on the, the H, so second page? Third page, enforcement?
Yep.
Um, this one I wanna change to enables, which is totally different from the rest, so I just wanted to ask you about that. Uh, let's see.
We sign owner or owner of property on which a sign is located who violates or enables a violation. Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Or allows a violation.
Yeah.
I don't know if that sounded right, but. Allows would be easier, but.
Enables might be more accurate, though, especially if you don't, if you own the property but your business isn't there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tolerates a violation?
I don't know if it also includes like if the building inspector allows it by, you know, I, I don't, I don't know. Yeah, it's an odd, but that one I'll also ask Joe 'cause it's, it's signs. Okay, I'll, I'll look at that one again. Five oh three for customary home occupations. B one. So home occupation with non-resident employee, the use of the dwelling unit where.
Maybe permitted motions. That's redundant. Just change that to allowed. That was kinda.
I don't know why.
Maybe it doesn't even need to be there.
Right, that's my question.
Yeah.
Does it even need to be listed?
The use of the dwelling unit or an accessory structure by the resident for busi, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it needs to be there. I think you can just remove it.
Okay. Next one is B three in that same section. The phrase, except sign shall be permitted, I wanna change it to except in the case of a valid sign permit, maybe? Let's see where am I, B three? There's no change in the outside appearance of the building or premises or any visible or audible evidence detectable from the property line of the conduct of such business, except in the case of a valid sign permit in accordance with Article Five.
Yeah, okay, I'm following you.
Cause it's, the sentence doesn't actually make sense with, except sign shall be permitted. Well, it does, but it, it's a little clunkier or.
Except sign.
Well, it's also not true, so.
Right.
Except is a negative and then it says shall be.
Yeah, it's, it's odd.
I like, um, I like what you just said, so.
Except in the case of a valid.
In the case where valid sign permit.
Okay, great. Last one I had a question on was one hundred seven oh eight E. I hope that one's numbered. It might not be. It might be in this OSRD section. I'm gonna find it again. I might not have written that. This, this document doesn't have all the numbers on it, unfortunately. So I'm trying to find it again now.
From seven oh four, eight oh four. Excepted by this bylaw.
So above eight oh four is that last, um, mark there. That last, like, lar, large paragraph, permanent restriction, yeah.
For use, for, for residential use or developed for accessory uses such as parking or roadways, except as permitted by this law and approved by the planning board.
I don't know if it needs to be there again. I mean.
Except by this.
Except as approved by the planning board.
Yeah. I think that would be done.
I don't think, I don't think it needs to be said twice.
Addition by subtraction.
Yep.
Yeah.
There's a few of that. The, we have a lot of duplication of language. Okay, I'll make those changes. I'll talk to Joe about the sign.
And so far, that's the only article we have, right?
That's so far all done. Um, we have a few other ones that, you know, we've talked about. I'm gonna write those up next.
Okay.
So we have time, but I wanna do it early.
Perfect, yeah. I know it's a lot and it will probably end up being legally long, but I think it's very easy to explain and I think people will appreciate it.
Yeah.
Luckily, we're not the controversial stuff.
Yeah.
We're just the sprinkle. We're the appetizer. Put that stuff early.
You know, when you do speak with Joe about the sign bylaw, I think that's one.
We wanna look at the sign bylaw itself.
Look at the sign bylaw itself, so.
And those will be some substantial changes, I hope, you know, not, not big changes, but clarification and.
Clarification and making sure we have rules that cover.
That makes sense.
Different scenarios, 'cause I think that there's.
Nobody told that to anybody on Ironstone Street.
We can probably name a few of the others.
That one like violates almost every normal, but such is life.
Yeah, I'll talk to Joe and that can be one of our warrant articles, probably is.
I mean, if, if he thinks it's doable, if it's bigger than, than us, we could plan it for the next, next season, too.
You know, everyone together and coordinate that.
Awesome. Um, let's see. It's pretty much it. Andrew, did you have anything for us this evening? Thanks for coming.